The call meeting order, seven o'clock, saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ben Hub.
Here.
Dan Van Muren.
Here.
Jeff Corpinning.
Here.
Ready to guest speaker tonight? Correspondence, a couple things. Do you have anything else?
I don't know if all of the trustees received. Did you guys get that from? I had Department of Transportation about training course flyer, quick clear training, about onsite safety, leave that with you guys. That was really on hand.
A couple things I had real quick was, the road work we did this year is completed on Somerset Road, Dogwood Lakes. Thank everybody for the cooperation. Hope everything's a little bit out there. Things go pretty smooth. Looked pretty good. Another thing I had was, Licking County is hosting a couple small events. One of them down here by Hope Elementary, County Line Road. They're gonna put up a new Licking County welcome sign. And there are dates and times on here, I'll leave this. And then that evening, they're going to do a small presentation on the history of the area. National Road, Gray Shop, Brownsville. So I'll leave this up here if anybody wants to see it. That's all.
I attended the Licking County Township Association meeting and they gave each township yearly reports, different things like that. Either tonight or tomorrow, hanging some of this stuff on the wall, there are different different maps of the township, CAUV parcels and that type of thing. Letter from Licking County Planning Commission, this month there wasn't anything pertinent to our township at their meeting. I went to the courthouse to get all the documents on the CMI Waste versus Bowling Green Township trustees. If anyone wants that number, it's case CB, well actually it starts with 2013, CB 01, 011. And the last thing is, the Board of Elections contacted me, the delivery time for the machines is Saturday, November 2nd at 10:00 a.m. I'll make sure I leave this with Barb because I know she's the one that's unlocking the building for that. And that's it for correspondence for now.
Is there any other safety? Jack? Fire companies next month will invite all the fire departments in to review and sign contracts to work fire protection EMS services. That'll be next meeting, we'll have a fire performance here. Zoning?
Ah, yes. You have a copy of my report, per conversation with prosecuting attorney, September, let me go through it. Per conversation with Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Amy Brown Thompson, I was in her office and a prior email regarding aerial photos needed to upgrade the files for violations which have been turned over to the prosecuting attorney's office. I am requesting the aerial photos that I brought up before, so I'm requesting that we, zoning can get aerial photos. So I need a vote on that. I would also like to send the violation for address 16246 Laurel Hill to the prosecuting attorneys, which I need a vote on that. That violation was submitted one year ago, they got a variance. They requested a variance, it was approved in February, still no lot split has been produced. The prosecuting attorney said it is time to do something. So I need to bring it to the table and have it voted on to send that to the prosecuting attorney as well.
I can talk about it one more time. The aerial photos, I also spoke with Amy, I spoke with Barb, she kinda told me what they had requested, so I called the prosecutor's office and talked to them and...
Can I hear you, please?
Yeah, what exactly are they for also?
And she had stated that the board is requesting an updated aerial photo for photos of a couple different properties to move forward with some cases, to see if any, you know, anything has been done with these properties. So I told what I bring to the meeting. And like I said, they are requesting it from us, so to move forward with these violations, I'd like to make a motion that we have another set of aerial photos done. Two addresses both.
Yes.
Two addresses. Do you remember what they cost before?
Eighty dollars?
It was around eighty, might've gone up because of gas prices and everything. But the estimate was eighty of last year.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and have another set of aerial photos done for these properties, not to exceed. Eighty dollars in costs?
Well, if there was eighty last year, you know it's gonna go up a little because of gas prices. Ben?
What exactly are the violations that we have to have recast of aerials?
It's for zoning violations has to do with junkyard and stuff like that. They want aerial photos where they can match them up, to look and see if stuff has been moved, hasn't been moved. They've had sufficient time to move stuff, so...
Can't they just do that by pictures?
That's what we're doing, getting pictures.
Well, I mean, other than aerial?
We've taken pictures too, but they requested aerial photos from us too.
Who requested that?
The prosecuting attorney's office, yes. I'll make a motion that we get another set of aerial photos done for those couple properties, not to exceed a hundred dollars.
Name the properties, name.
Do you have the addresses?
14282 National Road, 16246 Laurel Hill Road.
How come you haven't talked to any of these people?
You can bring it up the public comment.
I'll bring it up right now.
Bring it up public comment, sir.
You're accusing us of something that don't exist.
All right.
There a second to the motion?
No, that's just to see if they're the same or...
Same, changed, added or removed. If stuff has been removed, it's gonna benefit. If it has not, it's not gonna benefit them at all. They've had, they've got already a set from a year ago. Remember, we had it done a year, it's been a little bit more than a year, that's why she wants the updates.
What about anybody else? What about the rest of the township?
Not the middle?
The motion, the point of order, Mr. President, the motion was made and seconded. I believe that we can have discussion now?
It hasn't been seconded.
If you're gonna...
Did you second it?
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry Dan. There's no second, you're right, we move on.
All right, we'll move on.
Let's, yeah, let's talk about it.
The second one is to...
I have a question, Dan just said, "Let's talk about it." The photos have to be taken when trees are down, it doesn't work when the leaves are down. If the leaves are up, you can't see anything, it's a waste of your money and my time.
I know, but another month, all the leaves will be off.
Correct, the request was to have them taken in November.
You say request, I haven't been privy to any copies of anything from the prosecutor. You're saying the prosecutors requested from us that we take pictures, is that how you see this?
I spoke with her on the phone today.
Oh, today?
Yes, I spoke with her on the phone. And I asked her what's going on, and she said her office request that our board have more aerial photos taken of these properties.
Can she email Jenny or something, email you and let me have it on an email? You know, or do you have an email of it?
I have what she sent me in June. But I have to have this back, this is not nothing right here. This is attorney confidentiality.
Is that something the trustees have been copying on, or is this the first thing of us who seen it?
This was sent to me from the prosecuting attorney.
About these two specific addresses?
These two specific addresses, you know what?
That's what I asked, okay.
I made copies of them because you've already got them.
This entire email is about these two properties that you mentioned, the one on National Road and one on Laurel Hill?
Okay, I'll second it then.
And you wanna have discussion?
Well, if there is client confidential information, I think the board should be privy to it. Dan just saw it, I think we should be able to see all the facts on this. Because I think that's, we're supposed to get a board here.
Better want that back.
Is that copy machine set up now?
Yeah, we need to put the ink in it.
All right, I'd love to get a copy so I can take, go and take a look at it.
Give it to her for now.
I'd like a copy of this evening before we leave.
You can go make a copy now.
The ink things aren't even in there now.
Oh, then we have to wait to do that.
Or you want me to contact? You want me to contact?
That's a good idea.
Well, you have it, because I want it back.
I'll make the copy after meeting.
I'll contact Amy, tomorrow I'll get every piece of information that exists on this because before you can discuss anything, you have to have the information.
Let me just read it. And you heard it from them?
I didn't read it.
Now, it was your choice, I handed it to you.
We got a motion and a second to the motion, I'm enjoying roll call and the motion.
If you don't mind, please read the motion so I know what you're voting on.
Ben made a motion for more aerial photos for two addresses to see if there have been improvements made. The photos were requested by prosecutor for 14282 National Road and 16246 Laurel Hill. Dan seconded the motion, roll call, Ben?
Yes.
Dan? Jeff?
No.
All right, the next thing was to send the violation to the prosecuting attorney's office.
I guess I might have rewrote that, wrote it incorrectly. She has everything because she, of course, guides me for the violations. She would like for the board to vote to bring it forward, to prosecute. She already has all the records, it's time to prosecute.
For number two, for the sixteen thousand two four six?
Yes.
So she wants to, she wants us to make a motion if we do choose so, to proceed forward?
Yes.
That's, that's just on what the...
The lot split.
No, there's a, Mr. Corpinning has the copies I gave him, of the violations. There are two of them, and he has them.
You're putting both these in the same motion, are you?
No, one's already been forwarded, it was already voted on. I'm only putting the 16246 Laurel Hill in. The National Road is already in her hands.
That's what I'm saying, prosecutor wants, wants to know if we want them to move forward with the sixteen thousand two four six?
To take it to the courts for their violations.
Has there been a lot split done?
Do you want me to tell you in private, or tell you, does everybody have to know what's going on?
That's your choice.
Okay. I have had the people from the planning out, how many times Bob? Five times maybe? We've pulled out the culvert, we've made it look like there was no driveway. We've done everything they ask us to do, they will not pass it until every blade of grass is perfect. And the last time they were just, how many times, how many days ago? Two days, two days ago they came out, you know what they said? "The ditch is not straight enough, the ditch is not straight enough." That's, that was what they said, I called them again today. I said, "I think the ditch is straight now, can't you want to come back out?" This is what I've been doing ever since we've been here.
Who told you that, who came out, did you know?
Brad Mercer, he said the ditch wasn't straight enough. I just called back there again and emailed him, it's on my email on my phone. "Can you come back out, I think the ditch is straight now." Culvert has to be pulled out, grass, all the gravel had to be scraped off the driveway, make it look like there was never a driveway. Make the ditch straight, it's, they've been out there five times.
Yeah, there's one thing, I mean, why would they make you move that gravel, colored gravel?
They made us do it.
You could gravel the whole yard if you wanted to.
That makes sense.
They made us do it, they made us move all the gravel out of the driveway. I'm gonna get an attorney.
That don't make sense.
I was off to get an attorney on everything. He should. I'm sick of it.
Do you know anything about that work?
According to Planning Commission, nothing has been submitted. According to prosecuting attorney, when I talked to her, she said, "They got their variance in February, it's time to move on."
I can't do anything.
They have not, they have not kept in contact with me, I know nothing except for what I've talked to with Planning Commission.
I can't do anything until they pass the ditch. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
Okay, you're gonna ask Brad?
There's also more violations other than just that lot split.
When's the last time you talked, I think it's pretty recent.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, so you are working on this, trying to resolve it?
We've been trying, they've been out there five times. The gravel is, the gra, well, okay, this looks okay, you've got the driveway where it goes, you've got the driveway where it's supposed to be on survey, but you can't have this culvert in the ditch. Okay, so then we gotta pull the culvert out of the ditch, we gotta scrape all the dr, the gravel out of the driveway, call them back out again, "The ditch is not straight enough." That's the last thing he said yesterday, was he yesterday's?
So that's all, you're waiting for him to sign off and then it'll be done?
Yes, I can't do nothing until the ditch is straight, every rock is out of the yard, we did, we made it look like grass.
Do you think it'll be done by next month?
I hope so, it's not my doing.
Mr. Trump, I have a question. Isn't Laurel Hill a county road?
Yes.
Doesn't the county maintain those ditches and the culverts?
They should maintain the ditches, I don't know what the...
If they do this, huh?
I don't know what to deal with on that.
Because I would think that that's their job, not their job.
That's right.
So...
But we were told it was our job, and they told us it would come back out as soon as the ditch was straight.
Well, things has changed a lot, I don't know what the county is doing.
Right.
Far as, far as any maintenance, because they're even changing the, on the culverts and stuff.
What's, what's the woman's name that... Well, couldn't somebody find out exactly what the qualifications on and do something?
I'm gonna go in and talk to them.
Why don't you get a hold of Brad Mercer, he knows all about it. And the woman, I can't think of her name, it's Kim, I can't remember her name, she came out, she said, "I'm going to ask them whether you have to pull that culvert out or not." So she'd been out a couple of hours. Then she came out and she said, "There's not 250 feet between this culvert and this culvert, you have to pull this culvert out."
Right.
"And you have to scrape all the gravel out of the driveway, so far from the middle of the road back." I know all rules, I can't do anything until they pass that ditch, I tell you.
I mean, I know you're right on the 250 between driveways.
There's not 250 feet between the two culverts. So now, my guy that lives there has to drive up, where we had to make the new driveway, drive across the front yard. Okay, this is the stupidest thing I've ever heard of. He can't go in the driveway anymore, he has to go in where the new driveway was and drive across the front yard. And park it, you know, across the front yard, turn the yard up. This, this is what we had to do, so...
Yeah, I'm really doing, I'm gonna go and talk to Brad Mercer.
I'm gonna table this.
We already tore out, I have to have you realize also, it's not just the lot split, there are other violations. They were given a variance for the lot split, they have to act on that. February is one year on that, but this other one was given to them, it's been a year. So there are other parts of this violation.
What can I do before they pass that? They told me I can't do anything before that.
This has nothing to do with the lot split that I'm talking to him on now.
Is this the third one then?
No, it's the same violation, they got a variance on part of their violation.
Does somebody want to give me an idea?
Operating and maintaining a junkyard.
Where is that?
Is that motion on the floor?
You have gotten that violation, yes, that's the one that, that's what we're discussing.
Okay, we had a man from the health department.
How many deeds they got out there, one or two, or not?
Excuse me?
How many deeds they got, just one?
I can't do anything.
That has nothing to do with that.
Well, that's been going on now right here.
That's not what I'm talking about. Talking about the rest of the violation, they got a variance on that part, they still haven't done anything for the rest of it.
That's not true, the health department, there's, there's a guy from the health department that I have all kinds of paperwork from, who came out and checked everything back there and told me what was okay and what wasn't okay. He's already been there four or five times.
Ask the Mr. Knows and Burger, he'll tell you.
And I can't do anything with the deed until these guys pass the ditch now.
So it's either we pass it all or none of it.
No, no, it's, the variance is separate because they've already requested a variance. Okay, they've got one year on that, then I'll bring that back up because I have all the separate paperwork on that. But you've still got the operating and maintaining a junkyard, nothing has been done to alter that.
And that's the only thing the prosecutor wants, aerial footage on.
Yes.
What back there is a junkyard? The only thing I ever had was a letter saying that we had to move our tractors, we couldn't have a sign, we couldn't have any machinery in our field, we couldn't have the car that has license tags and a title. Every, you guys all had that letter of what the violation is. All those things, I don't know why those have to be moved, why do I have to move my tractors?
Don't forget about the mounds of scrap in their backyard in the side yard.
That's been being moved because, and there is, and there is documentation.
Aerial photos will prove if they were moved or they've been gathered, we had complaints that more stuff is...
There is documentation with the health department, you can, I'll give you his number, and he come out and took pictures several times.
Well, the lot split, we'll table it.
The lot split, I can't do anything until those people get tired of telling me the ditch is crooked, or there's too much gravel, or there's this, or there's that.
All right, let's do it one time, we'll make a motion to the table, proceed forward with the lot split, until next month.
Ask them how many times I've called them and how many times they've come out.
First second to the motion?
No, second.
Roll call, Ben?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
This is a motion to table...
Tell the prosecutor to move forward with the lot split violations because it's been a year.
I thought she said it hadn't been a year yet.
Hadn't not been here.
Wait, time to February.
Okay, can I ask you something? You said we're in violation of that by February? Okay, so are we being prosecuted or something about not having it done?
We're just table it until...
You're gonna table it until February?
Till May.
Till next month?
Yes, I wanna talk to Brad Mercer and then...
Why next month, when we have till February?
Find out why, why they're giving you trouble about the driveway.
With the lot split deal, are we in trouble now or February?
I think there was a one-year timeframe put on it.
Come the new year, I believe, is it the one year? I believe it's the one year, or come the new year, that variance is invalid because nothing was acted on it. So they've gotta do something prior to the year.
Something has been acted on it.
There is no notation in my books that I can present to anyone to prove it.
I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk to the Brad Mercer.
Planning has it.
I will, I'll talk to him.
They have it, they've been out there several times, it's something different every time.
So Jeff, what is your proposal?
I'm gonna move to amend the motion to extend the date until the actual expiration, we don't need to be...
There was no expiration set.
One year.
No.
You said one year.
There was no expiration set when they keep the variance.
We just need to find out why.
Well, what is, explain this one year if you don't mind.
Prosecuting, prosecuting attorney said that after one year, the variance that was given is invalid. Because you have reasonable time, and one year is beyond reasonable.
Okay, well, I remain, with the same amendment of the motion, I suggest that we don't proceed until that period of one year.
For the variance.
Well, you need to get the paperwork first, because you can't do anything until that paperwork is here.
Well, the mo, right, the motion on the table is to proceed to next month, to table it till next month. I think we should table it until the appropriate time when it would actually be...
What brought it up right now? Somebody calling the prosecuting attorney and letting them know that they don't know anything that's going on?
The zoning inspector's report, I imagine, because that's where I'm seeing it.
That's what I thought.
Because that's my job.
You've got a lot more to do too.
What about the violation?
Wait, wait.
Well, he needs, oh, okay, you have a motion.
We have a motion on the table, we need to finish what we started, please.
Sorry.
If nobody moves to amend, to second the amendment, then you go back to the original motion. Since there's no second, if you don't mind, can you read what the motion is, we're voting.
Ben moved to table the lot split violation until next meeting. Dan seconded the motion.
Jenny, could you speak up, we can't hear you back here.
Okay, well, I guess next month we can just do it again, extend it again, so if you're ready for a roll call, but we can move forward here.
I have everybody's vote from yours.
Yeah, we're waiting on it.
I need your vote.
Yes. So basically you're putting it on the agenda for next month?
Correct.
That's basically all it just sounds like.
Yes.
Put in the notes that I'm going to call Brad and I'm gonna tell him what happened at this meeting, and that they've gotta get somebody out here, and they've gotta quick tell on us about a ditch being crooked and all this other stuff so that I can get this done. Put that in the notes, because I've called them enough.
I'll talk to him. So the second one is the operating and maintaining junkyard, correct, Bob?
Yes. It's been one year.
So what, if the pictures are different, then, then what happens?
If the pictures show that they've removed some of the sacks that's already back there, that's good, that's showing they've done change. If it shows there's more, she's taking them to court. Because they haven't done anything except for add to it.
Do you want the letters from the local government?
They're not working on the violation, they're ignoring the violation.
Let's table that.
So either the photos are gonna help them, or it's not gonna do it.
We already decided we're gonna do pictures, so...
Okay.
Let's table that till next month, put that on the agenda. Yes.
Okay, Ben has made a motion to table that, put it on the agenda. Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, second. You want that?
Yes. Roll call, Ben?
Yes.
No, these are, these are for Mr. Corpinning, so he had multiple copies.
Thank you.
Are you doing a roll call?
Yes, I know.
Yes. Is that all you have for your report, Bob?
When I come to the next meeting, I will make sure I have the old photos and the new photos, so you, the table, can see it also. So yes, that was it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Do you remember the letter that we had that told us what we had to move? Do you remember the letter that we had that told us what we had to move? Do you remember that? Do you have a copy of that where it said our tractors, a sign, a car?
Yes, I remember that.
Do you remember all those things?
I remember, my top of my head, no, but yes, I remember.
Okay, I know Jeff has a copy of it for sure. No one has ever told me, except saying, well, you got the violation, you got the, why we have to move those things on that list and how those are a junkyard. How my tractors at the end, out in our field is a junkyard. How the car that's tagged and licensed, how that is a junkyard. And how the sign I have out there is a junkyard. And right down to my Mitt Romney signs had to be removed. That's against the Supreme Court.
I think the Board of Blacksmith told you that, didn't it?
No, they told me I did not have to remove those and that was, took before the Supreme Court. That you, you as a township is illegal to tell a person they have to remove those. Now, which things on the list that we were given as violations do you want moved? No one has ever told me about.
That was, that was a list. And the car, if you could produce, you know, that it has.
It's got a tag on it.
Title.
It's got a title. It's got all that. But somebody wrote that down without checking that, that this has to be moved.
Well, I just want to say, look, here's this.
Why do I have to prove anything? That person needs to prove that it's a junk car. That's her job. Now, the other thing, then, that the, the, the tractors, I was told, well, why don't you move them back up by the house? Why do I need to? It's my property. We use them to bale hay. Well, none of those run. Well, yes, they do. They all ran, I have witnesses. We had them all moved and lined up and we had an auction out there and we're selling some of them. They do move except for one out there that has a flag in it. I think that's somewhere. So can you guys, can you guys put your tractors where you want them? On your property?
Refresh my memory, Bob, do you remember what ruling was on this?
Now, when you look at that list, you tell me what needs to be moved.
I'll have to look at the list and we'll get back to it.
Okay, I want you to do that.
Very good. I know there was a ruling on that of what stated.
But I still don't know what the ruling was.
All right. Is there any appeals? Comprehensive plan? Park committee? Um, there was one pay rental in October for twenty-five dollars. November bookings. We had the election. The free rental for four days. There's an auction coming up on the ninth, an auction on the seventh, an auction luncheon on the ninth. Church bazaar on twenty-third. And then two rentals on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. The next park committee meeting is November nineteenth. Here's the money for the one rental. Good?
Park meeting?
The nineteenth. Let me know if you want to get those. I had said last meeting I purchased more tables for the community building. I was at Lowe's. They did have the same tables that matched ours, so I'm going to look at another Lowe's. Uh, and then also check the home depot. I'd kind of like to get some stuff that all matches, so, um, I'll start with some tables I just had done. I'm the park committee. Kind of behind her. Finished business, I guess, the brick, brick project was completed. We had quite a good turnout to help do that. There was probably ten or twelve people that turned out that day. September twenty-eighth to do that. So that's done. If anybody has seen it, obviously, Toronto flagpole looks pretty good. Want to thank everybody that come. Definitely want to thank Tim. He kind of took a big part in that, so. He, uh, he's put knowledge on our stuff, so I thank him a lot. Then also, we did the flag raising ceremony on October fifth. Went pretty well. I think we had about forty, forty-five people turn out for that. Want to thank the American Legion Post from County Land Route for coming down and helping us out with that. That's all I have on the park committee. If there's anything, Jeff? Unfinished business. Robert Grant?
Yes, um, now that the road project has been completed, we need to turn in the receipt so that we can, so that, um, Ohio Public Works Commission can send out the letter or the check to Smalls for the work that they completed. And I need the project manager's signature. So that would be Jeff's. I need your signature on there at the top where, where your name is.
Okay, well, as a project manager on this, I have certain responsibilities. And if I sign this with the information I have right now, that would officially make me a rubber stamp. So in order to, uh, process this in a timely manner without any delay and to make sure they get paid properly, uh, because I was, uh, not informed by either Smalls or the rest of this board or had communication of any of the schedule, even though that's what the project manager is supposed to do, to make this easy, I move, uh, because Dan, I understand you were there. There's a lot of things in question. I haven't seen one, uh, slip on materials or anything, but to make it easier, I just move at this point, uh, so you can get your signature that Dan Van Buren be assigned as the project manager on the remainder of this project.
Is there a second on that motion?
Oh, second.
Roll call. Ben.
No.
Dan.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Yes.
You took the responsibility of being project manager, Jeff. I think you should have been responsible in signing off on it.
I think we should have, uh, discussed that during the second before we voted on it, Ben.
No, I'm just telling him I've been.
You're entitled to your opinion.
You're right, I am.
I took the appropriate action so the township could move forward.
Is that all we need under Robert Grant?
That's all.
Uh, next thing under unfinished business is trash. If you guys have anything to discuss with that. Any discussion?
I have a copy of the case. Last time I looked at it, the, uh, CMI company on the, online, it says that they, I believe they received the, uh, paperwork. I think it says they have twenty-eight days to respond before any actions can move forward.
Have you heard anything on that? Have you been contacting Mr. Chakor very good?
I've been following it online from the time it became a case and had the case number. And that's all I have for you.
Yeah, I just wanted your signature.
I would request a copy of this, uh, form that is being submitted. Guess we'll have to do that at the end of the meeting as well, so take that with you.
I'd like a copy of that also, please. Jenny, that's all right?
New business. We discussed before about getting the cinder.
Yeah, we discussed not getting the cinder.
We didn't have time to run it.
Didn't look, check it out.
The cinder has been filled up. Did anything left out of your place?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we've given her one to draw.
Where are we with the salt situation right now?
In school.
As far as our obligations, Jenny?
We purchased what we needed to purchase from the last contract.
Has it been back?
We don't have any more room for anything else right now.
I don't have anything else on the new business. You have anything, Jenny? Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I just had a question for you. I was contacted by the state auditor. I understand I had some issues in getting the last draft audit information back. From what I understand, I read an email after the fact, but I understand you had a special meeting. Could you elaborate on what, what that was about?
What is a special meeting?
It was just a meeting with the auditor to sign the final paperwork and get my records back.
And we had received them back.
Yes. And the full audit is online, not the auditor.
The draft version is not online. Uh, I finally did receive a copy of that. I unders- I had requested it from you in the future. As I've always asked for, when the draft audit comes, I appreciate a copy of it. Because that's not public record.
Wasn't it attached to that email?
And what goes on, it was attached to the email I got a few days ago. I'd like to see it before it goes from draft to the final. That's the point of checks and balances, so. If you don't mind, next year.
It won't be next year. It'll be two years from now. And I probably won't remember, so you'll have to ask me again.
That's certainly, I put it on my calendar. Because I think it's important that every trustee sees the audits and potential things that, that, uh, I would think you'd welcome that in order to make sure that everything is done correctly.
Were you contacted by the auditor when the audit started?
No.
Yes, you were.
Yes, you were.
Yes, you received an email that asked if you had anything that they wanted to look into further. Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
I received the email that had you tagged on, Jeff.
I did not receive such an email. Ben, I'd appreciate if you not tell me what I have or I'm not receiving.
I'm telling you.
If I had that email, I would have seen the draft immediately when it was available to see.
Check some balances.
Appreciate if we can finish up in professionally tonight.
You guys have any other new business? Ben? I do not need. What is it? Um, I did not want to thank. Uh, I only request a copy from you, Jeff, of the, um, the final finished up letter that you had sent to the empty co-op to Marge Klein, um, everything that you had sent to her.
I already provided you with that. I made copies for.
I'm asking you for a copy.
I already provided you and everyone else with that and everyone else with me.
I'd like to have a copy of everything that you sent to her, so you could have that.
I've already provided you with that.
I'm asking.
Jenny should also have it.
I'm asking you for a copy of everything that you sent.
If you need it again, this copy here works. I'll get my, my copies of it and make you another copy.
Yes, please, I'd like to have everything that you sent us.
Your party received.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public comments.
I give you.
Go ahead, Dick.
Uh, Jeffrey had called me when Barb had his own paper that, uh, uh, he wanted to see the letter from the prosecutor. He said that, uh, it should be present for all the board members to view. Well, you know, I think if I'm not mistaken, uh, tonight's three months since he's been here, he hasn't been here tonight. Then what we've done in six months brought up that he didn't see it. And also, I want to make a comment, the back of the agenda, when the money gets spent, there's Jeff, Dan, Jack, Jack Havers, Don Watkins, the amount of their tax. And I have a question why Jeff is higher than all the other guys that's actually going to work. Is there a reason for that? He asked me in three months and I, you know, it just doesn't seem right, does it?
Well, I appreciate your concern. I can answer the question. I mean, if you want to ask Jeff directly, you can ask him directly.
You answer that, Jeff, why your checks higher? Why my checks higher than the others? It has to do with the, uh, taxes and deductibles and things taken out like any other employer. That's why it's going to vary a little bit. Each trustee is compensated the same.
Can I get a copy of all that, see if that's accurate?
Principal officer would have that information.
Okay, I'd like to see a copy of that, if you can.
Okay.
I have nothing to do with the, the set wage. That's all set in the higher revised code. Compensation of trustees is based on the percentage you budgeted. And all three are the same.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I got something, I want.
Go ahead. Come on through first. Go ahead.
Okay, um, it's about, um, elections, uh, sorry, the campaign, uh, my understanding with zoning, you got two weeks to pull, after, um, after election over, what is it? Two weeks to hold them up for twenty-four hours? Two weeks?
It's two weeks, I think it is.
That's it? In the Bowling Green Township.
Yeah, it's right in the zoning. So, I mean, you know, I don't know what you can say. Everybody, people must want the zoning in, so it's in, now you've got to be happy about it, so. So if it's in, you've got to follow the rules. But it does state that. I mean, it's been there ever since I was on the zoning committee. So, I mean, you know, I don't know. You guys don't want zoning, best thing to do is get people and get the zoning out. Or otherwise, just go with it.
Can I answer that?
Do you have a complaint or something? Because I.
No, she is stating, she's stating, it is public comment, but she stated earlier that, you know, she can keep her, um, camp- campaign signed up. I really don't care if she keeps up fifty years. But I do know in the zoning itself, it does have, that everybody has the signs up in two weeks.
Yeah.
Can I answer that?
Go ahead.
He missed, he missed the point. I gave you guys letters from the Supreme Court saying that a township cannot do that. You are illegal to have that in the resolution and there has been people take that before the Supreme Court.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen that.
No, I'm not saying that.
I haven't seen it.
And you can put them up now, but if I put them up.
They're my friends.
I can put them up. It's against, against the Supreme Court.
I may put them back up.
You see, you're missing everything what I'm saying.
I, I.
I'm not saying that.
What you're missing is it is against the law for the township to do that against the Supreme Court. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
To enforce, is there any rules? I, I don't know.
To enforce that rule. That is, that is, uh.
I would love to see that.
What do you call that? Free speech. That, that is, that's against the law.
Like free.
It's against the law. Now, I might put them back up and say God loves Mitt Romney and then it'll be a, it'll be a religious sign. Okay?
I like religion, so I did.
Thank you.
There's the answer to that. Look it up on the website, on the internet.
Ron, I understand exactly what you're saying and I'm really sorry that people twisted it.
She's twisted.
You don't have to apologize for me.
All right, we're gonna move on. Go ahead.
I'd like to say they did a good job on Somerset Road. But what dictates where your driveway got drenched or not to? I've got a three-inch drop dropping into my driveway.
Anything that dropped should have got sloped. Shouldn't have been sloped.
They had a lot of salt over.
We'll, we'll come up and take a look at it. We got a little bit. Yeah, we got a little bit of steam grinding or something in there. We could do that, so.
Still got to do something about this.
But we, I had another call on something, you know, where they didn't slope. Most of them are, they took the roll and sloped them. So.
But they did a good job before they made it.
We appreciate it. Uh, I put it over to him on the right, um, an address, I don't know, off the top of my head.
On the right.
And that's what your home wall, don't you?
They had probably a five-inch drop off. All right, any other public comment?
I have a question.
I understand.
Uh, last month when we were told that somebody was going to come up to take a look at the weeds and, you know, stuff in the ditch running along the south side of our property, nobody showed up. Also, the trees running down Bowling Green Street, that's an east-west street to that, you know, they're into the street.
I did, I did drive up in there. I drove the one, the truck up in there. I need to trim the, the branches because they hit the mirror, but other than that, I didn't have any trouble.
It's been five months.
But what about?
No, I was up there when Tim, Tim brought it quick.
But it's been five months since someone has come up and I, we requested that being done. This is the fifth month. And Dan, you promised us that that would be done within two weeks.[1746.71] And Dan, you promised us that that would be done within two weeks. But you did.
I went up there and looked at it. I drove, Tim, Tim was with me. And it hit on the mirrors.
It does.
But I drove that big truck up there and turned around in the driveway and come back out. That's, that's the only trouble I had, is it hitting on the mirror.
But what about all the weeds that are up above there and the ditches up above there?
They're blocking the water.
South of the property, it's blocking the water. Fall that comes down from Beach Street and up above the Beach Street because they're not here. They got six feet of weeds in there again, and the last person that came up there and cleaned it out was Jeff Forten.
Seems to know what he's doing, did a good job for it.
Yeah.
Should we call that?
Rear out the water out of Beach Street instead of running down across that ditch. And that would solve the problem.
It's a natural waterway, isn't it?
But it is only if they keep it clean. If you don't keep the ditches cleaned out, now, I mean, there was money there years ago and two and three years ago to keep those ditches clean. What happened to the damn money? Where is it now? Why can't we get the ditches cleaned out now?
We're talking about money, the money that's...
I mean, the money was there. You guys got paid to clean out those ditches two and three years ago.
We cleaned up here too before stuff was thrown in there.
There's no stuff that I'm talking about up above us. There's nothing thrown in there.
Rich, that's rich and both. They just full of snakes and run clear to hell.
I can't, I can't have anything to do with snakes. I don't have anything to do with the snakes.
All right, well, you took a look at the trees and the trucks.
Yeah.
I hate snakes.
They locked up the property under on that?
Yeah. They, they did hit the mirrors when I drove again.
They scratched the cars.
How wide that street is up there?
What the actual right of way is, I don't know, I can find out.
Sixteen half foot?
It probably is. I do call tomorrow, find out.
Bob? I got one question, please, on this, let's get Bob's towing debacle. Now, when these cars, I got registrations to and tags on it. Now, any other car in the complete township and county, it's setting, will have to have a registration and tags brought in to you and shown to you. When I bring in mine, any other car setting, you're going to, if I hear this car setting, you're going to spring it in and show it to the public.
There's certain criteria that it has to meet.
Like what?
Barb, off top, we had to know what the three criteria are for a junk car.
I never did anything on a junk car with them, but I do want to make one comment.
There was a car down the end line, that white car.
Never ever did anything on a junk vehicle on him.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. They never received any record on a junk vehicle. You had junk meetings, at no point in time was your address ever brought up. Now, I do have one statement because this is on public record. It's on recording all over the place. He just stated he has a business. That's one of the things he's in violation for. He is not allowed to have a business.
There's no rule like that.
There is a rule. He is not allowed to have a business where he is at. He is not grandfathered.
Well...
Read the zoning.
Time will tell. I want some forms. I want some forms to fill out.
So everybody in the township, whether they're, you know, no matter what, they can have a business?
No, there's designated areas.
As long as he's not... If he's just saying, you know, Bob's painting, that's a business.
One of his violations is he has a bunch of scraps and junk, and he had at one point in time massive amounts of junk vehicles that he's been towing off roads and bringing up there. He did at one point in time remove these, not all of them, okay? In the agricultural district, you are not allowed to have a business unless it's agricultural. Prior to zoning, if you had it, prior to zoning, if you had that business.
No.
That business is grandfathered.
The way I understand it is you can have a business, a paying business, whatever, but you can't have somebody come to your house and do business at your house.
You cannot be bringing vehicles and stuff and having a scrapyard either. That is a violation. We do not have a scrapyard in our zoning. It is a violation.
To make the statement that you can't have a business is not accurate, that's...
Okay, that, yeah, that's not true. And, and they went as far some time ago as saying we couldn't even have parts for our vehicles on our property. Maintaining a junk vehicle. Jimmy boy did that maintain.
Please, Mr. President, can we get back to my question?
No, go ahead, you have that thought, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Now, any automobiles...
Quiet down.
If any automobiles that are sitting in this township, the person that owns this automobile is going to have to bring you registrations, and the public is going to know this.
If there's a call to the board or the zoning inspector.
Oh, no, wait, oh.
No, wait a minute. There should not have to be a call. It's, 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 the zoning inspector is only going after two people in there all the time.
That's not true.
There is many, 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 many people in here that has cars sitting in their driveway.
Okay, let me, I need to finish. Okay, so there is a call, she will do a follow up. If it meets certain criteria, it's your right of violation. If you can prove that, that it does not meet their criteria.
How will I go prove if I don't, you know, they don't bring in their papers?
Who, who else do we have?
So if nobody calls her, it's legal, and if somebody calls her, it's not...
Do you have a complaint about a car?
People...
No, just coming.
If you have a complaint about a junk vehicle, make it.
She only, she only goes after people that the neighbor calls on all the time.
No, sir, no, sir.
Nobody else.
No, sir, I'm not complaining. My automobile is not a junk vehicle. It's a 1973 Pontiac Le Mans. It's a classic car. It runs, it drives, and I have tags on it.
But it's on that list to be removed as a violation. It's on that list.
This is what I missed.
Well, if it does not meet the criteria of jumping your vehicle, it'll be taken off that list.
But it hasn't, has never, I've never got anything saying that these things are taken off.
They're on the list and across the...
Violations.
Well, Dan, there's a simple condition of that. Just bring in this title, get a picture of the registration on the car. Ben, Ben, I don't think you can make that statement that you can remove it off. That vehicle should be not moved, but it should be...
All right, all right. If you guys can...
I'm...
You brought in the registration, we saw that. Nobody pursued that any further.
Ben, what I'm trying to say is, I was told that the only time she goes after anybody is if somebody complains. So everybody else that has all the same, could have the same things, and they're okay and they're legal.
That's not true.
But it is, because just a couple of us are the only ones, and it's because our neighbor complains continuously.
If there's a complaint made to me, this board is going to get followed up on.
Is there, is there a form that needs to be filled out for all these complaints?
No.
Okay, because we've got a neighbor around the corner that's holding illegal stuff according to what his business says, and nobody ever does a thing to him, and somebody's real close to that person.
And we don't, we don't ask, we don't know the latter names?
We all know who they are, I've said it many times.
There's four people in this neighborhood that's grandfathered in with his...
Well, he ain't, he ain't grandfathered in to do what you're doing.
All right, did I answer your question about the car? You, you brought the registration, all that is before.
Unless everybody else has to agree that.
Everybody else has to do it too?
No, you brought the registration and issued...
Why do I have to do it?
Because it was on the list.
Why was it on the list?
And you brought it in to prove.
But why was it on the list?
Barb, because it was not moved, it had been not moved. It is...
I don't want to do this to my neighbors, but I'll have to.
Why was that car on the list instead of somebody looking and seeing that there was tags on it?
I'm not, I'm not going to come on your property personal and walk over and look at it.
It's right by the road. The car is right by the road.
And you can see it.
Why did the person put that on the list?
We used it to move the ditch.
You don't move it, then it's, it's this.
It just sits.
Do you move it?
No.
Why do I have to move it? It's on my property.
No, that's if it's in town and it's still on the...
No, that zoning, that's everywhere. The junk vehicle is everywhere, but that's not what they're on. They have never received a junk vehicle.
All right, all right.
Now, if any of you have a second car that you just leave it sit there for weeks at a time without driving it, then it's illegal?
No, there's a certain amount of time with it.
Yes.
What's the time?
I, I, I don't have my book on it today.
It's two years, it's a while.
But I can give you everything according to. This is unbelievable.
All right, any other public comments?
Yeah, I'm going to move to a, I'm going to move to another country.
Yeah. Quiet down.
I have a question as to why Moyer Road was blacktopped and patched out instead of using chip seal. Was there a reason for this? I don't understand, that's a lot more money.
You can't smooth out, you, you can chip and seal over a rough road, you've got a rough chip and sealed road.
But that was expensive.
If you chip and seal...
Chip and seal.
Yeah, but you, you, how are you going to fix it?
My question, where did money come from? I, it, to me, I'd love to have blacktopped from my road, but they chip and seal, I'm on the counter.
Right, we spend seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars a year on road maintenance. The guys were out, we're actually at a price rate because they were out that way. If you take a road, if you take a road, chip and seal, let's bust it up into chunks, which it was, and you chip and seal over that in a month, it's going to be chunks again. If you blacktop over that, it's going to hold.
I blacktop. He says he didn't want it because people now, because Somerset Road is closed, they're flying up and down that road now.
We're just trying to make it easier to maintain and work on.
It's going to hold, so now, a couple of years from now, when we tar and chip it, we're going to tar and chip over it, blacktop, now it'll hold.
That's all I want to know, I just wondered why they have blacktop.
Any other public comment?
Ben, I just wanted to make part of public record that when Friends of Bowling Green Township posted to meet the candidates tonight, we checked with Barb and there was no other reservations for that night. However, it was posted on Facebook on the Bowling Green Township Volunteers webpage that we actually bumped a paying customer from that night, and that they did not get to use that building. I checked with Barb, and she assured me that there were only two reservations during that entire month, and they were both on a Saturday, and there was no one had reserved it that night.
I don't know, they want to meet that candidate. Ben and I did not have nothing to do with that.
No. No, all five candidates received a letter.
I received the letter in the mail. I didn't have, we didn't have nothing to do with that.
No, all five candidates received a letter. They were all sent the same day, they were sent to the address that was on from the Board of Elections, and only two candidates bothered to show up.
Well, there was no contact information on it, and if you called me, I had a charity auction in Columbus, so I couldn't be there.
I probably got the same letter you got, guarantee it.
And they didn't ask me what a good night was, but you know what?
I made it work.
I couldn't, I had already made, I had previous engagements, and it was Noddy Lewis to do it, so that's my, but I had nobody to call. No information on there, and it was like, well, who am I supposed to call? I mean, nobody sends out a letter like that.
Well, no, I know nobody. See, the thing is, even working for the township, when we got to go out and work for them, we don't have to call nobody, we're supposed to be there to do the job. You know?
That's a job.
I know, but if I have, when we have to go out any time, it'll make any difference.
All right, we've got a couple more, real quick. Go ahead, Dave.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight, just get out here tonight and see if I can make it out, and like I say, don't forget to vote.
Very good, thank you.
I just wanted to ask, do you know who puts on or who has control of that website you were talking about, the Facebook page?
Which one? It's Jeff and Gary and...
Bill Bourne out of New Jersey, Nicole Yonkins. That's the only ones that'll put their names. While Gary steps, start putting his name on there.
Excuse me? I put my name on there.
Oh, you did? You must be visiting. Oh, okay, yeah, so that's good.
Set it by Jeff Forten.
I did set that up. That's a non-governmental website, so it's a non-issue. Does nothing to do with the business of the township and the Board of Trustees.
But there seems to be a lot of lies posted on that Facebook.
It might not have nothing to do with it, but he posts everything on it. And he puts his own opinion, whether it be right or wrong.
Free speech.
It's his personal opinion.
And we, and we were highly attacked for having meet the candidates tonight.
It's an open forum, it's not a closed forum.
They did a great job, they don't have a pass.
So anybody, I don't know, anybody can post on it? I've never seen that, anybody can post on it?
If it doesn't stay whatever you request or something, it, it'll be deleted if Jeff doesn't want it.
If it being, if it being negative, you'll be taken off right there.
Last time I checked, there were five or six different Bowling Green Township related Facebook pages. If you do a search, you'll see that. And there are no official board or township government Facebook pages.
It's different when you're a trustee.
If you do that, then you have the kind of things you're talking about now. Serious issues, you better do it right.
But it's different if you're a trustee.
Yeah, you can't, if you're a tenant, you can't do it.
The board would like to purchase for a cell phone with it.
But he's still saying...
Price on good cell phone there, Walmart is thirty-nine ninety-nine.
I can't hear the way they're...
The thirty-minute card, thirty dollars card, I'm sorry. You get a thousand...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, there's people talking here.
I couldn't hear Jeff was talking maybe, I'm sorry.
At the last meeting, it was brought up for the zoning person that perhaps maybe she bought her, the board bought her her phone. And they do have a nice phone, it's an LG phone, and it's at Walmart. And you can get, it's thirty-nine ninety-nine plus tax. You get a thirty-dollar card, you get a thousand minutes, which we never use ours in a month's time. It's thirty dollars a month, and I think it'd be well worth, for having a phone of her own. I, I really believe that the board should buy her a phone. There's unlimited tax, and she'll have her own phone, and, and people can't complain that, you know, she's doing anything wrong. I think she should have her own phone.
It's thirty dollars a month?
Thirty dollars a month plus the phones, thirty-nine ninety-nine.
Well, we're actually paying less than that right now for it. We're actually paying twenty-five a month.
Twenty-five, but, but it's personal.
Right.
I can get you another five, bud.
Yeah, we want to be public, Ron.
I mean, we're, we're paying less than that, I don't...
Five more dollars to pay for that.
I don't see it.
If, if, if we are going to do that, and if...
I'd tell you, ask for it, ask me.
Well, it's fine, because it'll take a while.
Perhaps the law can be shut down.
I'm sorry, I need to come back on this one.
Well, the law board, the C program would be her work, you know, with her time sheet, so when you can add it to the law.
Flash cam.
Yeah, you do, you have access to public record, if you want to. Her work or time sheet, we can give you, help you with that.
Well, it's not just for me, it's for anybody at once.
Sure, that's, that's...
If you had your own phone, that, you know, I think it'd be great. Then she wouldn't have to mix up with her personal phone. That's only the smart thing, really, to do.
Well, we're paying less than that now, so...
We had talked about that before, about getting your own phone up, and that really is... I, that's a fair...
I think it's, I think it's an excellent idea, and that way... Right now, the prosecuting attorney, which you stated at the last meeting, who said that that was her personal information.
Right.
Anything that has to do with a township meeting where people are involved and the board's involved is public record.
Sure.
So if she's learning to have her own phone, then a law, national law, of the call she makes and to how long she's talking. But if she has her own phone, we can't check into that. You can check her, no laws, just her time card.
You can check her, no laws, just her time card.
You know, and I'm not sticking up for Barb, but there's a lot of things, you know, we don't pay for her internet. You know, she provides that, but she uses it for the township, we don't pay for her home office.
But, but that's on her phone, though. If she has her own phone...
I, I, which is discussing, I mean...
Will you put internet on it? It has internet on it. It has internet. For thirty dollars, you can get internet unlimited.
Well, then I both have LG phones, and all my kids have...
Unlimited internet, I'm just asking. You get all your time, thirty dollars a month. Okay. And your phone, yeah, I think it's like three or four dollars for the insurance. If you drop your phone, you send it in, you can get another one replaced free. And it's an upgraded model.
LG. Can we table it till next meeting? I'll look at it, look online, and see what they cost and all that, so I'll see if I get any specs on them, any good facts.
LG, right?
LG.
Is it LG?
LG.
They have different plans, you can get different plans. But they're really nice phones.
Do you have to buy like a card every month?
Yeah.
Something you put in a phone?
You can buy it right online, it's totally doable, everybody has their access, mostly everybody has access to the internet now.
Yeah, you just put it in a...
You can buy it right online.
Prepay cards.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they're just full prepaid cards.
I'd be like, do some more.
Gotcha.
I, I haven't heard from the committee that was going to rebuild Brownsville and Bowling Green Township. And if anybody got done anything?
What's that play mean?
If you're gonna bring all kinds of new things here, and, and you have a committee, why don't they in here and say they're gonna, we need to... They didn't have that committee?
Like planning committee?
No, at Walmart, yeah, they were gonna make Brownsville and Bowling Green Township come alive. Have that activity.
What we were told is nobody wants to live here because of how bad everything looks, but that ain't the reason. Let me tell you, there ain't nothing here.
What looks bad?
Ben, we don't really live in the dark ages, we don't even have water, I don't care.
There's nothing here.
Well, there's nothing we can do about that, and we can't.
Well, I'm sorry, but there is. Uh, we've talked to Kevin Eevee, and we've talked to the management water manager in Jamesville, the one that brought the line gray shot. And yes, there is, there's a lot that we can do about it.
See, now you're crossing counties, you're going from the skin of the...
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference, because half of gray shot is licking county.
Water there?
Yeah.
Yep.
One side of the road is, yeah.
And, and the Jamesville manager that was over at the water, um, management system there, he told us that if people wanted that here, that we could get it here. It's just a matter of wanting it.
That's it, it's a matter of wanting it, if people want it, we can discuss it.
And the person that we needed to talk to, he used to live here, right, the street right in front of me, was, is Kevin Eevee. He's over to the, he's over the water, because he's not gonna live here.
I don't know who that is.
Well, it's, it's Kevin Eevee, he used to live right in front of us.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know that. Yeah, yeah, I know the house you're up on.
He's over, he's manager there, he's the management now.
Gotcha. I can ask him, I can call down there and say, do you guys have any forecasted plans to do anything? You know, just kinda see what their projection is.
I have all the information, I have four pages of information on it, if you'd like to have it, I'm glad to send it to you.
Sure.
Or bring it in to you.
That's one, definitely, yeah, I mean, if that's something people want, we can look into it, but I don't know if it happened or not, I don't... I know they received government funding to do that down there. Right, they're gonna do their own system, decided not to, out of the county, so they received some kind of government...
Well, the reason why we called Kevin was because gray shot, water wells, and a lot of the systems which are in the big engine, they are here.
Yes.
Have our shit gas.
That's why they, they made them do with them.
Yes.
Exactly. Go ahead, Ron.
I gotta say this, I've been here over forty years. To me, it's one of the best communities I ever lived in. I used to live in the tax law. That was a nightmare. And you people over there, everybody else complaining about Bowling Green, it's a bunch of baloney. I raised my kids here, they raising their kids here, and to me, I don't have a problem with Bowling Green. I got problems with people sometimes.
You have an...
But wait a minute, I listen to you, you listen to me. And I didn't even interrupt you. Now, I'm just stating, I'm so sick of everybody cutting Bowling Green Township down. No, we're, I think we're great people. Now, if you people don't like it, find somewhere else go, that's the best thing I can say.
All we wanna do is be able to pay our bills.
No, you just want to complain.
We haven't started any other things against us.
Is there any other public comment for anybody?
I have a comment on that deal there. I, I lived in Pickerton in nineteen eighty-one when there was nothing out there. They would take the, get from my house to the freeway, it took me four minutes. And now it takes you forty minutes.
Yes.
So, if you guys wanna sit on forty in a traffic jam, yeah, you can have all the tolerance.
Yes, you're right. That's what we're saying.
You guys are missing the point.
No, you said it.
Pay our bills.
Alright, is that it for public comment? Nobody else?
I'm excited we should pay bills.
We, we, we have covered ways. And then it's sixty, eighty bucks a minute.
Four-three-two-zero, small asphalt, forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, ninety-seven cents. Four-three-two-two, Marsley, broken three twenty-eight. Four-three-two-one, auto estate, eight hundred and forty dollars, fifty cents.
Is this what you're calling that shit?
Four-three-one-three, two-three-four...
Was this the million here?
No.
No, she's... She respected, I'm just trying to...
She should come to our... How's it going? It's a much better... But I wanted to, I wanted to tell them that we got it. He wouldn't have that, I thought. Paying...
Yeah, I don't think that one's...
I would be fourteen, ten, eleven, nine, seven...
See if I wouldn't hear... Now, all the way back to that, it's...
We're talking about this for a while.
You can tell when you're down. Yes, yes.
I need a journey.